We're in regular session tonight. We'll be reading a series of ordinances. Our first item of business is to establish a quorum, and all members of council are present. Our clerk of council is not present tonight, and so I would accept a motion. Councilmember Butler has agreed.
I motion that councilmember Butler is our clerk for the evening.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second to appoint councilmember Butler as acting clerk. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. You are officially the clerk. Thank you very much, councilmember Butler.
You're welcome.
Communications. Do any of the councilmembers have communications tonight? Okay. It's been a quiet week, in some ways. And we'll move on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director Eliason.
No.
Mayor Patterson.
I have a couple real quick. One is a boil order that has been put in place, started today, and it'll be running through tomorrow at 2:00 p.m. We provide water service out to Wonder Hills, so this is for Carroll Lane, East Clearview, and West Clearview. Like I said, it's set to expire tomorrow at 2:00. So, again, for anyone who's watching out there in TV land, who lives in that area, keep that in mind. Another item that I have is that we received the guidelines moving forward for the 2019-2020 capital budget process. This is where municipalities can put forward projects, counties as well, but can put forward projects to attempt to get them into the capital budget. And the city planner, city engineer, and as well as the director from Arts, Parks, and Recreation and I have been meeting. We met this morning, and will continue to meet. We have a deadline in order to get projects that we think would fit within the scope of the capital budget process in by the 20th. The 20th is the deadline. We need to get them to the state representative, Representative Edwards, as well as Senator Hoagland. But we'll also be sending them, as we typically do, to Buckeye Hills Regional Council, which we are a member of, which is a council of governments in the world of economic development. You may remember, a few years back, 2015 to be exact, 2015, for the '16-'17 budget, '17-'18 budget rather, we put forward a couple proposals. One of them was for the Armory, and the other was for Farmer's Market. Both got in, but neither of them made it cut. We likely will be attempting to pull the Armory in again this year, but there's a couple other projects that we're also looking at putting together. The final thing is just a brief update on Senate Bill 331, which is the small cell bill, which was pushed into the pet land bill, which we, as you, council knows, we entered into a rather extensive suit, lawsuit. When I say extensive, I mean with other municipalities, 49 other municipalities, if I'm not mistaken. Law Director Eliason.
137. Oh, I'm sorry, the 331, you're right. It was 50.
About 50, that one. And we were successful under the single-subject rule to where that wasn't found to be constitutional. With that, the, there's a group in the state of Ohio that has been meeting regularly, and it has kind of been dwindled down. It started out with being about 50 people meeting to talk about the future, a future small bill, small cell bill, that'll be a standalone bill coming forward at some point. The upside is, is that 10 of us have gotten together, the city manager of Dublin, a representative from the Cleveland area, someone from the Cincinnati area, several different municipalities across the state, but I am at the table representing southeastern Ohio on this as it moves forward. So, like I said, we're sitting there with representation from the industry, being AT&amp;T, Verizon, Horizon, Sprint, and those folks. And it's great because there's finally some ability to have oversight as to what this bill could look like in the future. This is the bill that would affect the public right-of-way. And so, by being there and knowing what's being crafted is certainly the right way to go. We still have a long ways to go with how this bill's going to end up looking at the end of the day, but I just want council, anyone who's watching today, that there are lawmakers and city administrators that are sitting there at the table so that we know what to expect, and that we have a voice as this is moving forward. So just to give you an update, more to come on that. We've been having these, we've had four of them already, four-hour-long marathon conference call meetings, four different times, and these are long, extensive, grueling, but also interesting, and educational on my part, anyway.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Auditor Heck, did you have a report for us?
I do.
Thank you.
Just quickly, an update on the credit card policy, because I've been talking about it for a couple months. They were making changes. I think what we have now is probably the latest. It was made early November, so I've been working on it, got kind of waylaid, working on the budget, but I will have it, and I will say this, that some of the changes they made, because, you know, Athens is not shy about voicing concerns about things, and so they did make some changes, which will save you some work. The one thing you will need to know is you have to appoint a compliance officer. It can't be anyone who uses a city credit card or is in control of a city credit card. So, I don't have any great ideas. We've talked about some names, but, well, you know, it's really up to council. Hopefully, I'll have some suggestions for you if you want, but it will be up to you. But, other than that, I should have that ready to go, and we'll get that going in January.
Great, thank you very much.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
The compliance officer, do they need any special background training, just?
Nope.
Any?
No. It doesn't even say it has to be a city employee, although I would think you would want someone who understood our operations. They have to review our credit cards and their spending limits, and who has them, all the departments that have them, and things like that.
You're talking about a lot of sensitive information, too.
Yeah, it is. It is. But the problem is, so my first thought would have been Mary Ann, our treasurer, but she has a credit card that she uses for training, travel and training, and so that's the kind of hard thing about it. It should at least be someone, you know, with some financial knowledge about, you know, how it works and what we're looking at. So, they have gone to quarterly instead of monthly review. The original review was for all the credit card purchases, which is cumbersome, and it's not, it's not the detailed review right now. The other issue I had with that is the fact is, those bills have already been paid, you know, once they review it. So to go back and say, why'd you buy that, you know, piece of equipment, you know? So, we still, it's just still a little bit difficult to think who will be the compliance officer. You know, council clerk uses one, and so, I don't know. Maybe you can be thinking about it, I will be, but we are moving along on that now, just so you know.
Point of commission.
Good. We'll appreciate your suggestions. Thank you.
Sorry.
All right, we'll move on to ordinances for third reading then. Ordinance 13417 is an ordinance to rezone the Madison Heights Minor Subdivision property located on the corner of East State Street and Madison Avenue, and this is introduced by councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 13417.
Second.
This is the second of required ordinances to move along the development of this particularly hard and difficult piece of property to develop, and it's falling under our comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan saw for this neighborhood area. So it's actually improving for the neighborhood area. Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and second for approval. Are there any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 13517 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.11 Domestic Registry, Section 3.11.01 Definitions, and Sections 3.11.02 Domestic Partnership Criteria. This is introduced by councilmember Fall.
I move that we adopt 13517.
Second.
We had a spirited debate about this a couple weeks ago. It's basically updating our membership, our domestic partnership criteria to have some kind of proof that there's some, there is joint economic cooperation between people who decide that they're domestic partners. How's that one?
Okay. Good summary. All right, we have a motion and second for approval of 13517. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. We now have ordinances for second reading, and so I'll be reading the titles of them unless we have a suspension. Ordinance 13817 is an ordinance authorizing a one-year extension of the current franchise agreement with the Ohio Power Company for use of the city right-of-way pursuant to ordinance 5912, and extended by ordinances 13512, 9413, 14313, 12614, 11315, and 12416, and declaring an emergency, introduced by councilmember Fall. Ordinance 13917 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the city of Athens a solar power purchase agreement, SPPA, Estoppel Certificate, and consent to SPPA assignment, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by councilmember Fall. Ordinance 14317 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into contract with the Employee Benefit Service Center to serve as a city's third-party health insurance administrator, and declaring an emergency, introduced by councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 14417 is an ordinance authorizing a stop-loss medical insurance contract and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by councilmember Reisner. We'll move on now to ordinances for first reading, and we do have a few of these with suspensions needed as we approach the end of the year. Ordinance 14577 is an ordinance authorizing the city auditor to deposit 50% of the transient guest tax revenue collected from January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2020, into the tourism fund, and declaring an emergency, introduced by councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President, Lumbey, to read the pertinent sections of this proposed ordinance. Section 1, the Athens City Auditor is hereby authorized to deposit 50% of the transient guest tax revenue collected for the period of January 1, 2018, to December 31, 2020, into the tourism fund, and 50% into the general fund in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section 5739.09, Section B, Paragraph 1. Section 2, this ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the city of Athens, Ohio, in order to meet the January 1, 2018 effective date. It shall be in full force and effective upon its passage and approval by the mayor.
Okay. Any other discussion, comments? Councilmember Butler.
Thank you. I was just trying to clarify whether, and maybe I'm not seeing it or I overlooked it, is this a one-year, two-year, or three-year contract?
This is not actually the contract.
It's not a contract or agreement.
Okay.
Moving the money.
Gotcha.
It used to be 70%. That's what we're doing.
Thinking ahead.
All right. Ordinance 14617 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. You can allow me to read the pertinent sections, and I'll be doing that quite a bit rest of the evening. The mayor is hereby authorized, Section 1, the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement through December 31, 2018, to provide financial support for the tourism fund, from the tourism fund, for the operation of the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau. A copy of said agreement is attached heretofore and incorporated therein by reference. This ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the city of Athens, Ohio, and that the current agreement expires December 31, 2017, and it shall be in full force and effective upon its passage and approval by the mayor. And I believe if you have a full, okay, it's on our website, too, on our server, the attached reference incorporated therein, so we know what it looks like. Member Fall.
I noticed that it's for a year, where normally we do a three-year contract, so I move to amend the language to increase it to three years, please.
This is what I was talking about.
I need a second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second for amending ordinance 14617.
Should we have some discussion about this amendment?
Yes.
Does anyone care to speak about?
I will. I'll start. I think that, we talked last week about the fact that some of our tax funding, our tax revenue, is actually decreasing, income tax and such like that. One of the brightest spots that we have in the city is the transient guest tax, and I think that has a lot to do with the Go Get 'Em Visitor and Convention Board Bureau. I mean, they do the job that they need to do, plus they go and do even more. And this year, they've had, like, a number of award-winning programs that came out of the Visitors Bureau. I think that the city should entrust a three-year contract to the bureau. We win because we get 50% of that transient guest tax, and if the guest tax goes up every year, we're getting 50% of that increase, and it seems that it makes sense to be able to, be able to do long-term planning with a three-year contract as opposed to a year contract. Thank you.
Other councilman? Member Pappy?
I would agree on the long-term planning and the need to set budgets or hire staff or whatever it is you're going to do with your planning, that having a three-year agreement seems to make more sense to me. And just for the record, I think our tourism funds have gone up. I know every year I've been here, six years, it seems like they continue to go up. So it, again, it just, to me, seems like it's an appropriate way to, to help that organization plan.
Ms. Mayor.
You know, the rationale for it being one year as opposed to three-year contracts is, as the law director has pointed out in looking at the ORC, the ORC does speak to plural, and it speaks to convention and visitors bureaus. And by having a yearly contract, if someone were to decide at some point that they wanted to have a city convention and visitors bureau, it would provide for that to where we could relook at, or look at that contract as time moves forward, because it reads as, the monies that the city puts into an account line, i.e. the tourism fund line, is to be used solely for contributions to convention and visitors bureaus. And so if another bureau came along, or someone wanted to start another convention visitors bureau that's for the city of Athens unto itself as opposed to the county, you know, it affords for that, to where we can re-explore that on an annual basis as opposed to waiting three years.
But there is a contract clause in the ordinance itself.
Absolutely.
That says, that says that it can be terminated by either party, by, with 120-day notice. So that seems that that, right there, would enable somebody to be able to negotiate at that point, when something like that happens, if it happens.
Having it annually just takes it to where it's easier to project ahead as well, as opposed to just severing the clause because someone else comes in, you know, within however many day notice that someone needs to dissolve that.
The agreement should then be amended also, the second page that's attached under purpose, if that's what you're going to do. It should have the 2020 on it, and while we're talking about it, the auditor pointed out to me under city agrees, she pointed out to me prior to the session beginning, that there's a second line under city agrees that really, we don't quite understand, that says the quarterly payment for the, for January 1, 2018, through March 31, 2018, will be paid 15 days after the execution of the agreement. I don't know if she wants to speak to that, but I believe that she would ask if that be removed.
As Paige just said, we think it's old language, and it's not really how we've been doing it, but I also don't quite understand it, because aside from our agreement, we have transient guest tax laws and rules in our code. And in there, the hotels are given 20 days after the end of the quarter to send their money to us, and then we have 20 days to turn it around and send it to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And so I don't know where the 15 days came from, and there's no way we can, I don't know what it means by execution, if that means when it's signed, which will be mid-December or January 1, when it's effective. Either way, those quarterly payments are done after the end of the quarter. So we can't pay the first quarter's money 15 days after the first of the year, for example. So, I think it's probably unnecessary, but we could maybe, I actually just noticed it today when reviewing stuff for council, so, or reword it, maybe, you know, Paige has some thoughts on that, but I think she agrees that it doesn't really make sense, and that we want to continue making our payments the way we have been.
So we have an amendment on the floor. We've had some discussion, answering of questions, clarifying of text. Am I understanding that this amendment, we can also include that, striking that line as part of the amendment? The other part of the amendment is changing the language in Section 1 to say, entering into an agreement, and rather than it stating December 31, 2018, the proposal at this point is to extend that to 2020, so it is for a period of three years. So, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in, yes.
I would just ask, I'm, the both parties agree it is 120 days, which is, you know, a long time, six months, you know?
Right, not, that's not part of the amendment, but that's, yeah, we're considering this. Yep. Okay, so we have the motion and second. All those in favor of approving the amendment to the ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Thank you. Move on now to ordinance 14717, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract extension to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens County Economic Development Council, and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I'll read the pertinent section. The mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a contract extension through December 31, 2018, to provide financial support for the operations of the Athens County Economic Development Council from the general fund. A copy of said contract is attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, this ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the city of Athens, Ohio, and that the current contract expires December 31, 2017.
Okay. Thank you. Ordinance, yes, and a comment. Councilmember Cottis.
I have one question. How is the board selected for this, for the Economic Development Council?
The board is comprised of representation from all those who are members of the EDC.
So because we pay in, you have a, you have a seat on that, on that council? Okay.
Is it statutorily? Is there somebody on the board who represents, like, small organizations that belong to it?
There's only one other private organization that belongs, and that was new, that there was, there could be members who are from, from smaller entities or private entities, period. Ohio Health is a member, and so the president of Obanis Hospital is on the board.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on. Ordinance 14817 is an ordinance amending the 2017 appropriation ordinance, and this is introduced by councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I will ask to suspend the rules for 14817.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is that part of this, well, in fact, all the monies mentioned here is to cover year-end services, and we're almost at the year end, so.
Okay, we have a motion and second to suspend ordinance 14817. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended.
I'll read the pertinent section. Section 1, the 2017 appropriation ordinance, 15016, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $11,000 to General Fund 101.718 TC300, to cover year-end services for compus, denter, and increasing the total appropriations by set amount.
Okay.
So, I hereby make a motion that we adopt 14817.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of 14817. All those in, oh, any other questions or comments? All those in favor, yes, councilmember Pappy before we vote.
What is compus, denter? I just wonder. What's that?
Compuses are there, we work with, for parking enforcement.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. So a motion and second for approval of 14817. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 14917 is an ordinance authorizing the annual compensation for the municipal court clerk, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to have to ask for suspension for 14917. The reason for the suspension is that part of this is hiring of a new employee, and in order to meet the payroll deadline, according to our auditor sitting there in the audience, we'll have to pass it tonight.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor for suspending the rules for 14917, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
One nay.
One nay. Councilmember Pappy opposed, okay. All right, the rules have been suspended. Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 14917.
Second.
We discussed this in, oh, we discussed this quite a bit. It's been in committee, we've talked about it in sessions. I think that we put together probably the best package that we can, considering the financial restraints that we're under, so allow me to read it. Section 1, pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 1901, 31, Section C, Athens City Council does hereby authorize municipal court clerk to be paid at the hourly rate of $26.95 to the final pay period of 2017. Said hourly rate shall be retroactive to November 1, 2017. Effective the first pay period in 2018, municipal court shall be paid at the hourly rate of $27.49 or $57,179.20 annually. And, Section 2, the ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the city of Athens.
Okay. Also, rec- Okay. Also recognizing that the clerk was appointed on November 1st, yeah, yeah. Comments and questions? Yes, Councilmember McGee?
I just wanted to point out, I feel that I have a conflict, so I would not be voting on this, since I work closely with the municipal court clerk.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. Yes, Councilmember Pappy?
I just wondered what, above the pay grade, this ended up being at the 57,179.20. Daniel, was anybody of any answer?
Well, I think essentially this person would be starting at the minimum of, what do we call them, bands or pay grades?
Nine.
Nine, which is equivalent to what our mid-level supervisors are already at, though they have been here longer and consequently are earning more. They came upon that based upon the, the number of employees that the clerk would be supervising, and the responsibility that she has to take care of the court. And municipal court is a necessary item for the welfare and safety of the city, and we can't get along without it, so. Auditor?
Just wanted to add a couple of things, but, yes, that pay grade would include the amount that was originally put forth, but it put that person farther along in that pay grade, even though she doesn't really have the experience that people who have worked here for years, that's how they move through that pay grade. But that's, you know, that wasn't my decision on where that was going to land. But I wanted to explain, the payroll part for suspension is, as you know, we all get paid at the end of this week, which is the end of a pay period. The next two weeks after that is actually paid in January. So in reality, this is better for this employee's taxes, because she will get that retro pay that is in the ordinance, going back to November 1st, on this, you know, next pay. So we can pay her that in December. Otherwise, it goes on to her W-2 for 2018, along with a 2% raise, which I assume, because the, she was put where she was, that she'll get the same 2% in January that the other city employees, so that was my understanding.
Yes.
So she'll get a pay raise anyway, and then this will keep her retro pay from going on to next year's W-2.
Okay. So we've suspended the rules. We now have a motion and second for approval of the ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Butler?
Just briefly, I'll add that, I think I said this before in committee, that if the mayor budgeted for this, the amount that he requested, then I'm perplexed that this amount is less, so I will likely be voting no. Thank you.
Did you mean the judge?
Sorry, my apologies.
Okay.
Thank you.
The judge.
I saw the quizzical, I saw the quizzical look on the mayor's face, which is what made me pause.
There is a difference in those titles.
Okay.
Thank you.
So let's go ahead. We now have the motion and second. Let's vote.
It's obvious I can't do double duty with taking notes and commenting.
Yeah.
Multitasking.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by, let's do a show of hands, please. If you would show, raise hands.
Aye.
So we have four in favor, opposed, two. Okay. And if you'll record the two opposed, that will help our clerk when she returns. I'm keeping the notes. Thank you. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 15017 is an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Athens, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2018. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. We're finally getting to the thing that we've been working on. We, as the Financial Committee, the auditor, the mayor's office, the various departments within the city, is getting a budget together for 2018 that balances. Anybody can throw a budget together, ask for the moon, and say, here, this is what I want. But it takes a lot of heads to get together and say, well, this is what we can afford, and this is what we're going to keep, and this is what we'll have to not be able to do this year. So this is our first reading of this. I'm not going to go into the whole thing. The spreadsheet is, that if you look at it, is just gigantic, and what we're seeing here is just a very brief little summary of the, summations of the various departments. But there's an awful lot of work that went into this, a lot of hours, a lot of worry, a lot of sweat, blood, toil, sweat, and tears, as Churchill put it. That's the correct quote, by the way. So it's read for the first time, and I hope we can get this thing passed unanimously at the end of, by the end of the year. Questions? Member Paul?
I just want to commend everybody who's worked so hard on this the last few weeks. I know that you've talked a lot about it, Mayor, going and doing really tough negotiation. So I appreciate the department chairs, department heads, and auditor, and service safety director, and you, Jeff, thank you, and the mayor.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mayor.
I do think it's worth pointing out, the most challenging part of the budget, as typical, I think, was working through the general fund, and, because that's where a lot of the capital improvements take place, as well as salaries, you name it. And that's where we had to make a lot of hard choices this year, in looking at the budget. And it was a good process, where, you know, this year, the city auditor, as well as the chair for finance and personnel, and at times, the president of council, excuse me, was in those meetings, along with, with the deputy auditor, Laura Kreider, Kreider was in there as well, working through it. So it was, it was long, it was grueling, but like I said, I think we've landed at a good, balanced position moving forward with the budget.
And if I was looking at the comparison, we had 15, 4 in last year's budget in the general fund, and we're at $15,900 with this year's budget. And overall, it was $39,486 last year for the, all, all funds, including general and all the proprietary. And this year, it's at $42,786,000. So just to give folks an idea, and thank you all for all the hard work on it. Okay, ordinance 15117 is an ordinance authorizing 2018 staffing levels and non-union compensation, repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. I will read the ordinance for the first time. There's no re, no need for any suspensions on this one. Section 1, effective the first pay period 2018, authorized staffing levels attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference shall be in effect, and all ordinances inconsistent therewith shall be repealed. Section 2, pursuant to Ordinance 71-16, Athens City Council does hereby authorize a 2% pay increase for all full-time and permanent part-time, non-union employees, effective the first pay period in 2018. Then Section 3, the, this ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the City of Athens.
Okay. We'll move on to Ordinance 15217, an ordinance adopting a fringe benefit package for non-union personnel with this, within the City of Athens, and repealing all ordinances inconsistent therewith and declaring an emergency, introduced by Finance and Personnel.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll read the pertinent sections. Section 1, effective January 1, 2018, the fringe benefit package attached heretofore and incorporated herein shall be in effect, and all ordinances inconsistent therewith shall be repealed. Section 2, the ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the City of Athens.
And I believe on this one, council members at this point, rather than having the entire document, I think have the hard copy versions of the, the changes that are suggested. And it looks like some of the language has been cleaned up.
Yes.
And vacation clarified, and also retirement with opers.
If you go through some, some of the sections here that have been yellowed, you can see that some have been added, and others have been struck out, like compensatory time, Section E, there's some major changes there, and, and then some other minor changes, effective dates and so on, but it's, it's a long read.
Okay. Ordinance 15317 is an ordinance amending Ordinance 7717, authorizing Arts West Renovations Project, which is project number 314, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Heasley. We discussed this last week, and we heard from the mayor's office and the city service safety director about the attempts to improve Arts West, and this is an update and amended version, essentially increasing some of the amounts. And I think the project was rebid, if I'm correct, to help meet the needs. So you can see the strikeouts, and then the changes, specifically moving from $180,000 to $190,104, as well as strikeout in Section 3 of $20,000 to $30,000, a little over $30,000. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, Councilmember Cottis?
Yes, I just, just to reiterate, this is all kind of first-level improvements, also to the handicap ramp, there's an upgrade to that, is that correct? The bathrooms in the first level, are they getting redone?
When you're referring to the first level, you're talking about the lower level.
The lower level, yes, yes.
Yeah, it's kind of a funky piece of property.
Do you call it the basement? I don't know.
I do. It depends on which way you enter into it, right? Down steps or around the side. It will be, a lot of that will be renovating those restrooms on the, the lower level, because there's, there is a restroom on the upper level by the green room. I don't know if that one is going to be renovated at this point in time. May I get back to you on that? But certainly the lower-level restrooms are in serious need of renovation, and making them accessible.
So ADA accessibility on that lower level?
Yeah.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ordinance 15417 is an ordinance declaring certain police department firearms, obsolete equipment, and forfeited and abandoned bicycles no longer needed for a municipal purpose. This is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you again, President Heasley. We discussed, as you recall, we discussed this again last week, and there's an extensive list of items that the city would like to get rid of. We did have some discussion about this, and I do, I'm not seeing it in my email, but I believe, I thought the captain responded and described in detail. I don't know if the mayor received that email as well.
I did.
Yeah, if you could, I can't see it. I'm not able to find it.
I don't have it in front of me, but basically it was, there was a conversation during my staff meeting this morning, where we talked about this at length, and at the end of the day, the city has done auctions in the past, a long time ago. Captain Harvey was, had oversight over that, as did the city engineer. And when you start adding up all the dollars for their time to pull equipment together, whatever is being auctioned off, and to hold the auction, and if you're using an external auctioneer, percent has to go towards that auctioneer. I don't believe that was done in the past, but don't hold me to that. I think it was largely done in-house. But when we look at the, the amount of revenue that's generated via an auction for scrap, basically, a lot of times, versus the amount of time in dollars and cents that is put into holding an auction, we end up losing money at the end of the day. It's easier to just identify that that is, is under this particular ordinance to be disposed of, as we typically dispose of, you know, basic residue in the city, that this is the right way to go. That said, it's not like we aren't exploring things like govdeals.com, and thinking that if there are items in the future that we think that might be better served to put on a, kind of an eBay format like govdeals.com, that we can do that and put that forward in the future. But at this point in time, we feel that this still sticks to the valuation of these properties, just to dispose in this way, as opposed to running our own auction to try to recoup some level of funding for something like this, which is by and large scrap. I'll be honest with you, these bicycles that are in this, they're, you know, and this, this is in Captain Harvey's voice, in his language, a lot of it is scrap. It's junk. It's stuff that you really couldn't garner much from. There's very few bicycles in this that are even usable or financially rehabable bicycles. So, so, and that, that's one element. I mean, there's the firearms as well, that's why we're, we're sticking with this for now. But no, I received the same email from a resident, voicing concern over our method of disposing of properties, and the resident has a point. But again, going through, as I mentioned, something like govdeals.com, or, or even, the city's done this in the past as well, just a little more history behind this, is that we have, Ohio University has large auctions, surplus auctions. We have worked through that as well, and once again, there was little, if any, money that was, was recouped on the city's end, when you go through the percentage that has to go to the auctioneer, and having to ferry stuff from wherever it's at, up to the ridges to be auctioned off, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't work out financially.
Thanks for that explanation. That's helpful.
I want to point out, in the past, when we've put cars, and we've disposed of cars, we offer them to other organizations and nonprofits, which I think is something that is a good idea. My recollection is that most of the things that we get rid of, especially like cars, have already been through, cars and trucks, three different departments, and they've been kind of put together by bailing wire, because most of them are extraordinarily high mileage. So the city gets a lot of use out of them. And I, and I know that there's concern, like, you could not put firearms on a resale whatsoever. And so I think that the, having acknowledged that things that are useful can be given away would be a good policy, you know, like the bicycles, the four bicycles that were functional, or the police car that somebody else is now using as a backup, sort of thing. I think that's something that we can recognize that we do, to help reduce the amount of garbage that's going off.
Okay, yes, Mayor Patterson?
I agree with Member Paul. I mean, that's, it has worked for us. And I also would like to say that, another example to give, is that the scrap value for our former city trash receptacles, that used to be up and down Court Street, is so minimal in terms of what we could have gotten for scrap, as opposed to donating them to other municipalities, and we have, to Nelsonville, to, to New Marshfield, you know, communities that, that may really struggle with being able to, to purchase something like that. And for us to be in a position to donate to other municipalities, again, I believe, as long as, you know, we know that the value that we're getting, you know, is just not there, to be able to donate them to other municipalities that have a need, again, I think that that's the right thing to do.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to announcements and other business. We, just to make clear, we do have a little bit of an unusual schedule this week, and that with, council will be meeting again on Thursday, December 7th, at 7:00 p.m. Then our last meeting of the year will be on December 11th, so that's a week from tonight at 7:00 p.m. And we'll have the agendas out for those and published, available to the public. We have two motions, the first of which is to approve the Stimson mural as recommended by the Municipal Arts Commission. Yes, Councilmember Butler?
Thank you, President Heasley. I'd like to make a motion for us to approve the Stimson Avenue mural as recommended by the Municipal Arts Commission, that we were witness to.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, motion's approved. The second motion is to approve the treasurer's report, which was distributed to council members last week, I think, or week before. And we need to approve that, and so that it's in the record.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second for approval, or, of the treasurer's report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Now we have an opportu, oh, are there any other announcements, council members or the mayor? Okay. We, we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city We, we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that were not covered on the agenda. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak? Okay.
I don't, I don't think we voted on the Stimson, I think we just had it first, and is that true?
Did we not move?
Well, you know what? Just so we make sure, we had a first and a second. I appreciate your double checking on me.
Quick, quick, instant replay?
Yeah, no, just like football games, let's vote again. This is the motion to approve the Stimson mural. The motion was made by Butler, seconded by Councilmember Pappy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again.
Opposed? Oh, yes, Mayor Patterson.
I want to thank council for approving this, for voting affirmative on this, because this is public art, you know? I've heard from others, saying, why is money being spent on something like that? This is public art, this is part of who we are, and trying to enhance the beauty of the Athens, of Athens, but also enhancing the experience for those who are coming to visit and quality of life, so, thank you, council, for approving this.
Okay, and I didn't see that, and coming back to where we were in the agenda, I don't see that we had anybody who was interested in speaking for the three minutes. We are going to be going into executive session, so we'll be having a motion to move into that executive session in just a moment. I will let audience members know that if some of the students are here or press that do want to ask questions of council members or administration, what we'll do at 7:51 now, we'll have that motion, we'll have a time available until 8 o'clock, that's when we'll go into executive session, and then after that, we do open the doors and adjourn officially, so.
I move that we go into executive session for pending litigation with all members of council, the law director, the auditor, and the mayor, please, to be in attendance.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we'll take the vote. Councilmember Butler?
Aye.
Reisner?
Aye.
Pappy?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Katsas?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
And Smedley?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so it is 7:52 right now, we'll have, we'll, we'll go into that executive session at 8 o'clock. Thank you very much.